Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education Wednesday, September 14th, 2022 meeting. The meeting has been properly posted. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Dr. Khan?
Here.
Under there. Here. Mrs. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Lucowski?
Here.
Mr. Allison Jolich?
Here.
Mrs. Persky? Here. We're all present.
Thank you. We also have the pleasure of regions, please.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Community comment. Does anybody wish to comment tonight? Does anybody wish to comment? No community comment this evening. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School board calendar. There's a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, September 28th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. at the ECC, and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, October 12th, 2022, at the ECC. District administrator update. Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right. Good evening. So a couple updates that are from our past and a few for the future. So a couple of things that hopefully are on your calendar already. We have a lot of excitement in Franklin on Saturday. The consignment sale is going on that the Franklin Education Foundation hosts for multiple years. So that's from 8:30 to 2:00 at the middle school, I believe. Also, Franklin High School will be hosting the Saber Marching Band invite. We had sent that invite out. It involves eight different schools' marching bands. Really neat because our middle school's invited to do the opening part of it. And so gates open at 4:30. The ceremonies, the competition, I guess, starts at 5:45. There'll be concessions and just a lot of excitement that's going on. So that's at the field at the high school. Hopefully, people are able to attend that. In other news, this week, we had SWSA meeting, which Linda will probably give more of an update on later, but really talking about those priority focal areas. They have five that they're focusing on this year. The bigger ones that we talked about were the fiscal support, making it equitable. Obviously, the governor's budget's going to, proposed budget's going to come out later this week. I believe tomorrow it's slated to come out. And it gives some pretty big promises. It has some good focus on mental health, which would hit priorities of what SWSA wants to look into. Also, more equitable reimbursement for special education and hopefully some per pupil. We also, as we know, we're in the second year of our biennial, so we're hoping that we, that some of those things come true out of what's, the big promises are that are in that right now. In addition, we talked about ways to get involved with local legislators and what that looks like for a variety of districts. I'm proud to say for us, Andy and I met with Senator Bradley a couple weeks ago. It was a very nice engagement. We're all committed to continuing to meet, and he's also committed to joining our key communicators group that the board and the district is going to start in October. So we're excited for that engagement. We also have a meeting with Representative Wickers coming up in the next couple of weeks to be able to meet with him and hopefully establish that same kind of partnership and then begin to tell more of the story of what funding looks like in action in a school district. And I think the work through our key communicators group will help with that. I think if you haven't heard about it, good for you, but we've had some transportation issues these first couple of weeks of school. I'm glad to say that we haven't had any changes or cancellations in the last four days.
I'm just knocking at wood, sorry.
I know. We knock on it a lot and anything that resembles wood. So at four days, we haven't had any that beat the prior record of cancellations, which was at like 18 hours. So we are feeling and hoping to be optimistic, but the reality is that still means that there's 22 routes daily AM or PM or just PM that haven't been running. And so we are extremely thankful to our parents and any community members. There's been a lot of amazing carpooling going on. People have been extremely understanding under circumstances that I can understand as a parent would be very hard because it's uprooting what you had planned in your household right as the school year is going, and there's already high emotion. So I'm very thankful for that. We know it takes a lot of patience and a lot of planning. Thankful for our team who's come around a lot of problem solving, and we have been able to, our first round of canceled routes, to resolve like two-thirds of them internally with creative solution making and things like that despite what was handed to us. We are on an additional year of a five-year contract with First Student. As you know, we're out to, excuse me, we're out to bid right now for our transportation contract starting in the 2023-2024 school year. So that's kind of how that piece works. We had a meeting with First Student last week Tuesday to try to come around the table in collaborative problem solving. It took a couple of days, so we felt that maybe a little more, but we're hopeful. We've invited them back for another meeting this week. We haven't heard back yet, but we're hopeful to build that communication to get us through a successful rest of the school year. We understand there's a shortage of bus drivers. They have their challenges, too. We're excited that Mike is going to work on his CDL license. We have other community members and people within the school district that are seeking and looking at what it looks like to get their license. So we're thankful also for people, you know, looking into it at least. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, but maybe it will. We found a few internal people that have a CDL. We're going to see if it works out for them to add on the federal pieces that you need to drive a school bus, but figuring out all the creative ways that we can, can work through something that's handed to us. We've offered free before and after-school childcare in each of our buildings for those families that are affected, that don't have a route, that know that they wouldn't usually be able to pick up at that time. For the most part, that's been very well received, I should say, and also communities, like I said, are helping get students home, which is helpful. I think that's kind of the updates in that area. We just continue to ask families to have a backup plan. We don't know when cancellations will come, but we do know there's not extra drivers waiting for routes if somebody calls in sick. So the unfortunate part is that we know there will be other effects. We just hope it's not as many as we experienced early in the year. But that's all of our updates right now. Oh, I'm sorry. One other thing I would say is that we understand that there's a conflict on October 7th, our homecoming night, that we have the homecoming football game. We also have opening night of Forte's musical, The Sound of Music. So we have, and we will be pushing communication out to families in the near future. We've reserved the Milwaukee Sports Complex lot and also have two shuttle buses that will be running for transportation, for overflow parking, and additional police presence to help monitor traffic flow. So that'll be coming out, but we understand those are two things. We're also looking at how does that happen so that it doesn't happen again? Yeah, those are our updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other school board business. Summer school report. Mr. Blessington, please.
Yeah. Good evening. And in your board packet this week, you received a report on summer school. Just a pretty detailed report, so I won't go into too much detail other than answering any questions other than I wanted to lead off with. We're pleased to report we had higher overall enrollment this year, and our percentage of students that were Franklin teachers had increased. So I'll just lead into that and then open up to any other questions you have based on the report that was submitted.
Questions? So were all teachers, are all of them certified? You had to be certified to teach summer?
Yes.
Okay. The report kind of didn't say anything about the grade school, but they are all certified?
Yeah, we had about a third of our teachers in summer school were non-Franklin teachers. So if you flip that around, like 70% were, so.
Do we, do we have, do we think that enrollment will continue to go up and possibly reach the pre-pandemic levels for summer school? That might be impossible for you to know at this point, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly encouraged by looking at the enrollment trends over the last three years. I mean, if you look at 2020, I mean, we're at 254, and then at the elementary school, we're up to 399. So I think what we're offering, the format of the days of the week that we offer, I think we'll all be contributing factors and then able to secure staffing for it are all going to be factors in that.
Do you have a specific goal around summer school enrollment for next year?
I mean, like a specific number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, my, my goal for looking at is to just continue to increase the overall, like enrollment, so like what a target number is. I don't have one in mind specifically, but just to continue with like that positive trajectory of increased interest in it.
So I understand those numbers will also impact our funding. Is that correct?
They do get added to the revenue limit as part of our three-year rowing average.
And does it, the transition classes, do they count? Yeah, they count as a.
Yep. So anything that's associated with summer school counts.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything, like, would we reach a point where we have so many students and we don't have enough staff that we'd have to, like, put a limit on how many students we would have?
I mean, I think that's going to be a consideration in our current state, right? Hopefully, you know, you know, we're going to already start the, you know, my vision for starting staffing for summer school is going to start like next month. So I think having some of those things, but I think we do need to plan for that, you know, if, if we reach that point where we can't meet the demand. At this point, we can, so I think it's important for us to get out front early, so if we need to recruit from like other districts to do summer school and make it attractive, and first of all, try to secure our staff, get them like engaged and want to be part of it, like that would be the first priority. But I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, and hopefully that's a non-starter, a non-issue for us.
Is there anything that we do specifically to, like, encourage staff?
I mean, I think, you know, compensation is always in this environment is, is a consideration. But I think more importantly is they want to have like, you know, a program that's going to be well-run and put together and organized. Personally, running summer school programs prior to this, like trying to manage staff from within the district is not as difficult as when you're bringing in different people from another district that aren't as familiar with our procedures. And summer school starts and it's over in like a snap of a finger. So it's like, there's a lot to do on the front end, so I hope to secure our summer school principals, some of our staffing sooner rather than later, so we can really get a jumpstart on that planning piece, because I think that is critical for, you know, like retaining and then, you know, attracting other staff.
One change that was made that was before Bob was hired was moving to that four-day week. So we did get positive. So summer school, for the first time this year, ran Monday through Thursday instead of Monday through Friday. So that was directly from last year, staff. I mean, they want a summer two, right? I'm just being honest. That Monday through Thursday, we think the numbers are more, because we have that change, I mean, you can never prove it, but the feedback was positive from parents and families and staff that the four-day week seemed to be what people wanted. So Laura can speak to, to salary. That model of those, all this planning, Bob just inherited summer school. Also, all of the planning went into it before then, but we're going to keep the four-day week because I think we helped, it helped us.
Yeah, and from a salary perspective, we're always monitoring what makes it attractive and what, what our teachers are expecting to make to want to continue and support that program and that learning over the summer. So it's something we review every single year to make sure that we're keeping them engaged and, you know, making sure that they want to be a part of it.
Are the classes pretty much the same year to year? Or, I mean, they look kind of fun. I, I. Come on in, Linda.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some nuance, especially at the elementary level. There's, I mean, you're probably looking at it, there's a little bit diverse offerings that look fun, maybe, I guess, when you're looking at.
Backyard games.
Yeah. So that's another piece, too, with, it's an opportunity for our educators to like maybe propose a course or do something a little bit different from what they do during the year, which I know is attractive for a lot of our, our teachers to, you know, do something really different and, you know, then our community's really interested if we have things that are maybe not what they typically have offered during this, the school year.
We, we made a conscious decision, the board made a conscious decision based on, based on when Christopher Rutter was in that chair, to change to less remediation and more, more fun classes, like, like we're talking about these new classes. And, you know, I don't know if that's been successful. I suspect that it has. But maybe, maybe the, maybe the less remediation is making it so that the numbers won't, won't be as, as high as they were in the past. Maybe they will. I don't know the answer. But, but there was a conscious decision made about, it seems like maybe three years ago, Debbie?
I would agree with that.
To change to that, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, I think you see more of that at the elementary, middle level than high school is, I mean, we're just a little bit more limited in our offerings as we like balance credit recovery and different things, so.
Sure.
But I, I think that the commitment that, that you can count on from me is we're going to continuously, not just me, but others, like continuously look at like the offerings, what are drivers for that, what are motivators, and, you know, we, you know, we can increase our enrollment, we certainly will. And if there's a will, if there's some interest in the community to try some different things, I'm certainly open to hearing that.
And I know there was an email going around yesterday from Mrs. Weckman about how the, how the college application, college application class was, was successful and, and, you know, more things like that at the high school level are, are really interesting to people as well. So, you know, keep those, keep those things coming.
Yeah, for sure.
Overall, everything that I heard from various people in the community and seeing things online and whatever else seemed very positive, so it's a good job.
That's great.
Good job.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Blessington. All right. Thank you. Seclusion and restraint report. Ms. Cody, please.
Wah-wah. We always go from this joyful conversation about summer school, but we are statutorily required to report out the annual seclusion-restraint data that we, we collect. And just as a reminder, seclusion-restraint may only be used when a student's behavior presents a clear, present, and imminent risk to the physical safety of the student or others, and it is the least restrictive intervention feasible. So it is something that we do take very seriously. So if you look at the report, I'm sure you obviously took, read through it in preparation for tonight. Really, if you look at that last page where we have the charts, we had that the chart A is the data from last year by school, and then chart B is really, you know, to me, I'm more curious about that because it does reflect, you know, some of the changes from year to year, both as a school system as well as in the individual schools. So when we speak to some of those changes, you know, we look and we did have, you know, a few schools, three schools, that increased the number of incidents of restraint and seclusion, and then several decreased as well. And as we've talked about in the past, sometimes it is really a change of student behavior or student dynamics from year to year. And, but we do, you know, regularly assess our data throughout the year, and we do try to respond to what we're seeing, and we also try to think more proactively. So some of the, the efforts that we've made, some of the strategies in order to decrease the number of incidents I did highlight in the report, so Hycologic had retired at the end of last year, and this was a big area of emphasis for her. And so our newly, one of our newly hired student services coaches, she is a certified CPI trainer, and CPI is one of the, it is a high priority for us when it comes to non-violent crisis intervention and prevention. So she was then able to join Dan Ablesworth, who is another one of our specialists, who's also certified. So that does allow us more opportunities to work directly with students and staff right in the buildings. And one of the immediate steps that we took after analyzing that historical data going into this school year is doing our back-to-school professional development. They did go around and do, provide training in verbal de-escalation, and that is the first, probably, it's a really critical part to that CPA, CPI training, because that is where, you know, we, obviously, sometimes it's our, how we respond to students where we can either de-escalate or unfortunately, you know, trigger students. So, so that involved all staff members, so teachers, educational assistants, custodial staff, buildings and grounds. So that does support our universal understanding of those behaviors, and then the adult, again, understanding your role as an adult, like how you influence that situation when you're in the moment with students. And then last year was our third year with the Enhancing Social and Emotional Skills in Students with IEP's grant. So we did definitely see an impact on student behavior throughout the course of the three years. And so there are systemic pieces that we are continuing to incorporate in our regular practices. And then again, we still do have a relationship with the coach through DPI that was, worked with our staff quite a bit. So, and then we've, we've also, like I also outlined, we have engaged in some additional training. So we really think about like that universal piece, how are we really, you know, impacting the, the day-to-day with students consistently? And then, you know, thinking again about how we can respond as we have students who do present, you know, a different level of, of safety needs. So, and then one of, two other points, just as I was talking with Ms. Persky earlier this week, too, we had a great, I thought it was a great conversation.
Great conversation.
But the other thing that's not indicated in here is when I look back at the data throughout the year last year, we did see improvements over the course of the year based on some of our, the work that we were doing with teens and with students. But this, you know, the numbers here just reflect the number of incidents for the school year. So that, to me, was encouraging as well, that we may have had some students come in with some needs, but definitely saw some growth and some changes there. And then the other side of it is, we were also just talking again about how, you know, the different situations and the different ways that we respond. Sometimes a restraint can just be where you're, now, I don't want to say just, but it is when you are, might be transporting a student from one space to another, rather, like kind of helping to move down the hallway, you know, if there's a risk of safety. And so we were just kind of having some conversations about that as well in terms of what does it really mean, you know, to seclude or restrain? So, so the biggest thing is just, we continue to try to educate ourselves and, you know, what are all of those steps we can take so that we do not get to that point with a student as far as their safety where we have to seclude or restrain? So, so what questions do you have for me at this time?
So, in the medical field, restraints and seclusions may be a difference compared to the school, of course, you know, because restraints in medical field is, you know, you kind of, you know, hands and everything are kind of tied to this. And I understand in this one, it's a different restraint. Can you explain exactly what does restraint in student means? And my second question is that, if I look at the graph here, it says number of restraints, for example, contritial is eight, but number of students restrained is one. So can you also explain on that?
Sure. So oftentimes, again, the, the number of students from year to year changes based on, you know, what they present when they come to us. So there might be a situation where we could have students who have just a number of incidents based on, again, you know, what their past experiences or what their needs are. And, you know, it takes maybe more, you know, we're trying to work with students to help, you know, them develop those coping strategies or, you know, what can we put into place again so that, you know, the student isn't triggered to that level? But I don't know if that really answers your question, but.
The difference between the number of restraints and the number of students is basically one student can have multiple incidents. That is a difference.
Exactly. Yes.
Those are numbers for the whole year?
Yep. Yeah.
And can you define restraint? That was his first question.
Oh, sure. Yeah. So it's where we are basically, you're not using anything else. It's kind of hard to describe, but we do learn like different holds or ways to, if we do have to put our hands on a student, it's, it's done in a way, again, that is, is safe for them, where they can't harm themselves or, you know, other people. So I'm trying to think, without demonstrating, I, I think it's, it's kind of hard to, yeah. Hard to describe.
It's not hospital, like you said, it's not.
It's like hugging them, basically.
Right. It's like you could, you could even, I'm trying to think of even how to describe it, like anyone else at the table could even help me out.
I mean, they're just specific maneuvers.
Yes.
And positioning to make sure, so it's not like, it's always only in the case where the safety of the student or somebody else is in question.
Yes.
And you have to step in to mediate in between that. So it's, it's a physical aspect, but there are certain maneuvers that you're trained in. It's not just like, oh, and there's a high level of training with it, and there are certain people that then are trained within that, that may be part of that team that's called to help. So when there's something going on, it's the, everybody has, like you were saying, that universal level of training and understanding, but there are specific people in every building that would make sure at that higher level in what those specific techniques are and the maneuvers that you can do to safely ensure that that student or other student's safety isn't in question.
Yeah.
And also making sure you're not harming them in the process of doing it. But it's also always a last resort. It's really only when direct safety is in question. Otherwise, it's trying to, you know, legally de-escalate, try to move to a different environment without any.
Yeah. And it, it is very limiting, limited, limiting, but limited in terms of those, those techniques. And we do, anyone who is trained, you know, it's very specific training, and they do have, they become certified, and then they have to recertify, you know, like every other, like we, we do our training like on an annual basis, but, but we are working with staff throughout the year. Anytime there is an incident, we debrief as a team to really assess, you know, to understand the student needs. Was there anything with our response that we could improve? And there's always communication with parents as well. So, yeah.
So I noticed that, you know, obviously 50 on, on the chart for Southwood Glen is probably the biggest number on the chart. So should we be concerned about such a number or?
I think, I just want to step in for one second. I think one thing I want us to be really cognizant of is the number. We won't want to be using any data that starts to help people identify, like who we may be speaking about. So our numbers are low as far as how many students. I just want to caution us before we step into that, that we're not saying things that are considering the safety and privacy of our families.
Yes, yes.
It seems to me that over the course of time, like you said, Ms. Cody, that, that the numbers have gone down, and I think, I think that probably relates to the training and the prevention is, is, we're stepping in, we're stepping in before we need to restrain.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I, I think if we continue, we continue along those lines and, and, you know, the numbers, the number of kids is small, and I think as long as we can continue to make that number of kids small and, and make the number of incidents smaller, I think we're, I think we're doing what we can. So I think prevention is, prevention is the key.
Thank you.
And having the ability to have all staff trained to some level and then specific staff, you know, at a different level, and just responding to those, to those needs. You don't know, you know, every student comes in and we have to help each student achieve what they can and what their unique needs.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Cody? All right. Cash defeesence. Mr. Chromy, please.
So not a whole lot of updates from the last time we've talked, other than the dollar amount. And I just got it to the final dollar amount of 6.745 million, that we could still fit it under the $9.13 for the mil rate. So last meeting when we had talked, we originally brought 3.81, did those calculations, and we're just talking about 6.725. So like getting down to the really nuts and bolts and exactly figuring out about $20,000 more could fit in there. Ultimately, what I added as well is we would pair it with the additional levy that was done last year. And when we send this to the financial advisor, they took a, they take a look at the three current bond offerings we have, and they're going to fit it into the best bond offering that produces the greatest savings long-term from the interest. Ultimately, this is on our smallest one with about $8 million left. So when we pair the 6.745 with the additional money we have, we'd actually be able to just wipe that one off the books completely and be done with that one. From the standpoint, I truthfully wouldn't care whichever one it went against because it would produce the greatest savings. From the standpoint, I truthfully wouldn't care whichever one it went against because it would produce the greatest savings, but I do like eliminating debt and only being down to two in the process. So again, not much has changed, other than just tweaking that dollar amount to fit under the nine dollars and thirteen cents of the mil rate.
What was the dollar amount from last year? And why wasn't, why wasn't it put toward defeesence last year?
The second part I can't entirely answer because I don't know. But the dollar amount was around one point five million, I don't know the exact, but that's pretty close, one point five million dollars. I think ultimately it was going to be used towards defeesence, but to really make sure you're defeesing, you actually have to pay it down. Otherwise, it's what's considered an over levy and can be used for a future defeesence. But until the money's paid down, defeesence is not the terminology that can be used.
So, Mr. Chromy, I think in the last meeting, we did request you to present us the scenarios of what happens if you pay this, what happens if you doesn't pay this? Right now, your presentation definitely shows us what happens if you pay this, what happens if you don't pay this?
So from the mil rate standpoint, is that what you're requesting or just in general?
From the general standpoint of definitely, it's always recommended to pay off the debt if possible, but take into consideration the increase in tax levy on the citizens at this time. And the one thing which I'm concerned about is that, we all know, and the feds have been talking about that, they want to do the soft landing, but most of the economists do agree that we are going to have a hard landing and enter into recession. So with that being said, you know, yes, we want to decrease the, you know, debt, but at this time, is this the right time to levy the citizens who are already going through rough waters because of inflation, which has been historical? Is this the right time? That's what I want to understand right now.
So if we do not defees, our overall levy, at least estimated to today's date, would be thirty-one million dollars and some change, like a very small amount of change, with the mil rate at seven dollars and fifty cents. So it's pretty drastic change in the mil rate, there's no doubt about that. With a high degree of certainty, I would say we would not even propose a defeesence next year, given the, at least DPI's budget that was presented, the governor's budget, as our district administrator mentioned, is coming out tomorrow within a very short period of time. I guess short of the entire legislature flipping, the DPI's budget is not going to go through. But we have some high-ranking Republican officials who typically aren't very pro-education, have said something needs to be done in the next biennium. So with a high degree of certainty, I'm certain something will be done between both the revenue limit and categorical aid. So the option to levy, to over levy next year and do a defeesence probably doesn't present itself in our scenario.
Can I ask why you say that? Since there is, we're free to levy anything we want as far as debt.
Because I would not raise our mil rate just to defees.
But you're raising our levy twelve percent in the scenario that you're proposing. Is that correct?
I'm not going to continue to argue this point with you. What I would tell you is I'll continue, I would maintain our mil rate, which we have done, because last year was nine dollars and fourteen cents to nine thirteen, but I would not propose an increase in our mil rate just to defees debt.
But I would, but you have to let us know that we are increasing our tax levy that will be passed on to taxpayers by twelve percent. Could you just give us a straight answer? Is it going to go up twelve percent or not?
Lynda, you've made your point.
I, I think he did give us a straight answer, that the mil rate is going to be.
We all understand.
We have, we do know the numbers.
Okay, all right. You understand then that the mil rate is, is not the whole picture? That is, will be applied, the same mil rate applied to eleven percent increased house value will generate a significant increase on your tax bill. I don't want anybody to be surprised.
What does that, that, the twelve point seven percent, how does that translate into per thousand? Am I understanding this correctly?
Well, essentially, I think what we're comparing really is that seven dollars and fifty cents, if we do nothing, to nine dollars and thirteen cents. So a dollar sixty-three would essentially fall off per thousand dollars of our mil rate, with almost certainty that it's going up next year to something else. I couldn't tell you exactly what it is, because I don't know what portion is going to be applied to the revenue limit. But I would presume it's probably in the dollar range or more would be applied next year. So we'd have essentially this roller coaster effect that would be applied simply because of what the state will, I don't want to say impose on us, because we can certainly use the funds, so I don't want to use that word, but allow us to levy under new revenue limit adjustments.
A dollar more than seven fifty or a dollar more than?
No, I, I would assume it's probably going to be at least a dollar more than seven fifty. So, but again, that's ballpark estimate of anything that could potentially happen.
And what would you assume would happen with valuation next year?
I would assume valuation of property is going to stagnate quite a bit. I think we're already seeing the decrease in the housing market from housing sales. So there's even a potential that housing value potentially falls in the next year.
Well, let me ask you this question. So we are going to be increasing levy for debt service, you know, eight million, six to eight million dollars. What would you propose that number will be next year?
Again, I can't propose that because I don't know what the mil rate would be. So I, again, would not offer up a defeesence should that increase the mil rate, just to offer up a defeesence.
What I'm understanding from you is that your main goal is to keep the mil rate steady.
I, I'm trying to, yes, prevent it, prevent it from fluctuating. And if we have the option to defees, I like to get rid of debt. I personally like to get rid of it. I think it's a wise businesses, business decision as well, if you don't carry it. Again, as I mentioned last time, if we take a look at our facilities, I am quite certain they're not going to look exactly the same twenty years from now. I mean, something will be done, maybe it's new, maybe it's an addition, I don't know, but something will need to be done over the twenty years. This helps us by increasing our bond rating, by lowering our debt, provides us room, should we need to in the future, undertake additional debt to do whatever project or projects rear their head. Again, twenty years from now is going to be totally different. There's a great chance, I would say with almost ninety-nine point nine percent certainty, I won't be working here in twenty years. Like, I hope to be retired doing something else. So, like, it's going to look different.
But you're so young, Lynda.
The handsomeness hides it.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve and proceed with including a not to exceed six point seven four five million in the district dollars, in the district's tax levy and budget for the purpose of defeesing outstanding debt of the district.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. I want to say that we have a recommendation in front of us that uses the word savings. Savings can be a slippery word, and by that I mean you have to be careful. The word savings can get our attention and cause us to take action. When I get my Kohl's savings coupon in the mail, I pay attention, I feel pretty good about myself when I see I saved twenty dollars on my sales receipt. And then sometimes they even hand me Kohl's cash. But sometimes I have to ask myself, did I need to buy that? Did I really save that money? Or would I have been better off not buying whatever it is that it was? If I needed it all, I'm in. If I just wanted it, I'm not so sure. We do not need to do anything with our debt service this year. What is our want? Room to borrow more for a new school? A new school is a big question that deserves time and planning. Is a question for another day, not today. We have heard that debt prepayment will save over three million dollars in interest. The savings and interest is two hundred and seventy-five thousand each year for the next fifteen years. Will my taxes go down? Not this year for sure. What if we do not do this? We will not increase taxes and we will know that the interest will not change for the next fifteen years. I urge you to not approve this. Thank you.
I'd like to bring a motion to.
We have a motion, you can offer an amendment. You can offer an amendment.
So the amendment which I'd like to kind of bring is that I'm definitely concerned with the looming recession which the country is going to face, and a lot of people will be losing jobs most likely. I hope it doesn't happen, but we have to prepare that at this time, twelve point seven percent increase in tax rate is not justifiable. People are already hurting, people are choosing between buying bread or going, you know, baking essentials. With the current inflation, all this trend, federal government is doing everything to get it done, but with the current projections of the economics, is this the right time? And I'm concerned that this is not the right time.
What is your amendment? Do you want to amend the motion at the table?
Yeah, I want to bring an amendment that not to increase the property taxes right now and consider it next year.
That's not really an amendment, so that'll be a yea or nay on that.
I think we were still discussing, I think you kind of jumped ahead, Dr. Bear. I have to echo Dr. Khan's concerns. I think that we were very conservative when we gave our employees their pay increases for next year. And many of our employees live in Franklin, and we were conservative with those pay increases, and now we're going to ask them to pay more in taxes. So it was kind of a wash then for them. I hate to be the person who says that's not how we've done it in the past, because I don't like when people say that to me. But quite honestly, this isn't how we have done it in the past. We've been very careful with our citizens, we have not given them double increase, double-digit increases. And I, I agree with, there's a luminous recession coming. There are people that are choosing between buying bread and maybe going somewhere because of the cost of gas. And I just feel like I can't support a double-digit tax increase on our citizens. I, I think small incremental increases would be fine, but not a double-digit increase like we are proposing here. I think Mrs. Wacowski, in conversations with you, you said that in Oak Creek, they had done multiple double-digit increases in their tax levies. Is that true? Do you know?
So last year, we defeesed five point three five million, and I think about ten million dollars is on the table and potentially being approved as of last Monday or the coming up Monday.
That percentage was what, though?
There was a ten percent increase two years ago. It is, it has been much more than we have seen here. Also, keep in mind that Oak Creek has outstanding debt of over a hundred and fifty-six million, our debt is sixty-six million. And are they still short-term borrowing?
They haven't been short-term borrowing for a long time. The ten percent, the ten percent increase two years ago would not have been a defeesence, though defeesence was first brought up last year.
I, I guess I just want to say, we're not Oak Creek, we don't want to be Oak Creek in Franklin.
I don't want to be Oak Creek in Franklin either.
Okay, well, in the district though here, and I've been around long enough, we stopped comparing ourselves to Oak Creek. We stopped comparing our demographics to Oak Creek, we've stopped comparing our scores to Oak Creek, because we don't want to be Oak Creek. The only thing that, I guess, I personally want to be part of Oak Creek is, is in the businesses, right? All the businesses they have, they have a nice town square, we don't have that. But that's, that's for the mayor and the common council to take care of, not us. I, I don't want to support that kind of tax increase, I just can't with a good conscience support that.
I'm not proposing it to be Oak Creek, I'm proposing it to be a better for one.
I know, but I feel like, here's my next point, as far as Oak Creek goes. We have a lot of new administrators here, important administrators that came from Oak Creek, right? Right now, no fault to your own, you're taking a hit in our community on this whole busing situation. I can't imagine with a double-digit tax increase on our citizens what that next hit is going to be. And we are going to be compared to Oak Creek, and we're going to be told that we hired you all from Oak Creek and now we want to be Oak Creek. We don't want to be Oak Creek. I just think this is not the time to do that. I think we have this new administrative team, you kind of have to prove yourself to our community. You have to prove to all of us that you've done a good job and that we as a board made a good choice in your hirings. And I just think that if we hit our community, our taxpayers with that increase, it's not going to be good, especially in this economy.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Let's say that your property taxes or my, my property taxes are ten thousand dollars a year, total bill. If we go through with this, what do you think the dollar increase to the taxes are going to be?
I'm not, I'm not sure, Alan, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Because I think everybody's thinking that this is going to be a ten percent increase, so it's going to go from ten thousand to eleven thousand dollars. But we're only affecting the district's portion of the property taxes.
And every year when those tax bills come out, we get those calls that say, why is Franklin School District tax so high? Why is that such a high portion of my, my tax bill? We, we get those calls.
And I think the most, most important thing which for me is that, and I'm thinking about the citizens of Franklin.
The senior citizens.
The retirees, you know, the veterans. Their property taxes goes up, their social security hasn't increased that much. How can, what is, of course, paying off debt is always, we'll have some long-term savings, but is this the right time? When you have an option to buy a bread or go for a movie, you buy the bread, as simple as that. Common sense always says that go for the basic necessities. Paying off debt is always good when we have a little bit of extra. Like twenty twenty-one, when the economy was booming, people were, everybody was maybe, you know, making a little more. Government was giving more money at that time, so a lot of people have savings, at that time it's a different thing. But this scenario, when we are current right now, with the current inflation rate, with the uncertainty that tax hike, is, I'm not going to be supporting that. It's, we have to really think is that, do you want to go for a movie theater, as simple as that? The logic is that.
Dr. Khan, would you, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, I, I know, I know what you're saying. Would you, the three people who, who, who have spoken that say they don't want to support this, do you support, we talked to three weeks ago about defeesence and whether, whether, whether we'd support that amount? Would you support, if, if this was amended, would you support, would you support any amount? Would you support any amount?
Yes, I personally would support a lesser amount, yes, absolutely.
If anyone wants to offer an amendment.
What, what amount?
Well, and can I ask real quick, because Alan was kind of getting at this, and I don't know that we've had an exact number, but the same way that, Lynda, you say, you know, oh, savings and that makes us feel good, is kind of the same, you could say the same about, you know, not raising taxes, that makes us feel good if we don't raise taxes. But at some point, we probably do, you know, taxes do go up, right?
Right.
What is, what is the actual dollar amount? You know, like what Alan was saying is, you know, you say, oh, we're raising taxes, we can't do that, we have to save our citizens' money. How much money are we actually saving them? How much money would we actually, like, what would, what would that dollar amount be on someone's tax bill?
I think twelve percent is enough of a red flag for me, that I don't have to get into the nitty-gritty of whether that's a lot for you or that's a lot for you. Twelve percent is a red flag that says too much.
Okay, but, but what I asked was, what I asked was, do you support any amount? I know Debbie said she did.
Well, currently, there's already a million dollars in the bank from last year. And if we keep it the same as last year, that's another million dollars. So two million dollars, and we can keep the levy flat. It's, the budget that was brought to us originally had a million dollars of defeesence in there. And we have the million dollars in the prior year, two million dollars would be a number. And if we really are that excited about defeesence, we have fund balance that we could use and be done with it.
What if, what if we, what if we proposed, what if we proposed an amendment that, that took into, instead of the six point seven four five, Mr. Chromy, what was the number from?
Earlier.
From three point eight one.
Three point eight one. The three point eight one amount, what does that, what does that do, what does that do to the mil rate? And what is it, I mean, certainly it's a, certainly it's an increase in taxes, but, but, you know, tax, the amount of assessment on your house averages six, averages raising six percent every year. It, it is. If, if it's not supported at, if it's not supported at, at six point seven four five, it is instead supported at three point eight one million, is that, is that a better number for you, Debbie?
What would that number be then?
The number from.
For three point eight one? What is the mil rate?
I don't want to know mill rate, I want to know the levy change, bottom line levy change.
That percentage?
The mill rate is eight dollars and forty-two cents.
What is the?
The, the total tax levy would go from thirty-three point five to thirty-four point eight million dollars.
What is the increase?
One point three.
Million?
Yes.
The proposal, the first budget that we received was a slight levy decrease. Is that correct?
In June?
Yes.
I, I can't recall offhand.
Okay, well, let me remind you that it was. We had a levy decrease in front of us. But it did increase debt service, because, keep in mind, our general tax levy is going down a million dollars. Is that correct?
It is currently set to be twenty-five point five six from twenty-six point nine three, so, about one point four million dollars. One point three.
So that can be shifted to debt and still have no increase in levy. So, two point, two million dollars roughly, I think is a good number for defeasance.
All right, Mr., Mr. Alexandrovich made a, made a motion, and it was seconded. Would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Alexandrovich, to, to the three point?
No, I'd, I'd call for the vote.
Okay. Motion's been, motion's been made and seconded, and Mr. Alexandrovich is calling for a vote. I think we need a voice vote.
Yes. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Aye.
Dr. Khan?
No.
Dr. Beer?
Aye.
I vote no. Mr. Sprague?
I vote, uh, no.
Mrs. Wukowski?
No.
The motion does not pass by a vote of four to three.
I'm, I'm looking, I would like to make a motion to approve and proceed with including a not-to-exceed amount of three point, please tell me that number.
Eight one?
Three point eight one million in the district's tax levy and budget for the purpose of defeating outstanding debt of the district.
Are you making the motion?
I'm making the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Can we have discussion?
Yeah, it should be discussion.
Yeah, okay, we have a discussion.
Sure.
Okay. And what would be the levy increase?
One point three million dollars.
One point three million dollars, that are, that we don't have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Taxpayers could have. And keeping in mind that that increase does not add anything to the classroom.
Thank you.
And we have no plans on the books or wrote it or discussed about a new school. So, why? What justifies this need, this want to defuse debt?
I think.
In this year?
I just want to make one comment that I'm keep trying to keep in the back of my mind, is the notion that property values are outside of our control. They have gone up. They will affect, continue to affect our citizens next year, and they will continue to affect our, how our district is seen by the state budget formula, formulation. And so, I, I do want to keep in mind the notion that there is some value in having people's tax levy be somewhat not erratic from year to year. And so, I also don't want citizens to go, have a dramatic increase in their levy next year. Keeping in mind that we are going to be short, one point five million dollars that we use to cover our budget, that was one-time S R funds this year.
Well, and I think we have to continue to remember that we are looking at a long-range, you know, yes, you're talking about this year's tax levy, but we're looking at the financial status of our district over the long term. And as we've heard and said a number of times in the last few discussions, anytime you can reduce your overall debt, it's going to help you in the future, when we need to look for more debt, or, you know, other things come up. And so, I think that, I just think it's a good idea to have that long-range planning, and not just be thinking about, you know, what is, what is happening right now, but look at how it's going to, you know, project over the long term.
And do we have such a plan? We have new administration, maybe they need to kind of settle in and give us that long range.
I have confidence in our new administration.
Do we?
I don't think it's a question of confidence.
Does anybody have any, does anybody have any new, does anybody have any new, anything new to offer in terms of, terms of arguing? We've been talking about this for, for the last three meetings. Is there anything new to offer? Otherwise, I'd like to call for a vote.
So it was, the original proposal was twelve point seven percent for the six point seven five, or seven four million. Mr. Sprague, you made the motion for a?
Three point eight one.
One million.
Yes.
Okay, and what is that percentage? What does that percentage equate to, from twelve point seven to?
So the twelve point seven that's referenced is strictly the property value.
Okay.
Equalized property value. So it's not a true representation of the budget, but if we're increasing by one point three million, I'm going to do quick math here, and thirty-three point five? Four percent, maybe?
It was four percent, roughly four percent, was what, when we talked about it at the annual meeting.
So, the six point seven four five would be eight, under eight. The twelve point seven is directly related to equalized property value.
Okay.
So out of the three point eight one million, will we still be using the one point five million from the past?
Yep, I will take whatever's, was over-levered last year and apply it.
So basically, then you're looking at two point three million, around?
Two point eight.
What, what you are approving tonight, what you are approving tonight is the additional levy. It is, the one point five gets tacked on after whatever is approved tonight, from the actual defeasance.
What, I'm sorry, what, could you explain it again?
So the number that you are approving tonight is the number that would be added to the tax levy.
Can you read the motion? Can you read the motion, please? Or, I don't have it in front of me.
Motion to approve and proceed with including a not-to-exceed amount of three point eight one million in the district's tax levy and budget for the purpose of defeating outstanding debt of the district. Right, so this is what's being added to the tax levy for the purpose of defeating. So whatever's approved tonight, we'll take the one point five, or whatever exactly it was last year, and apply it to whatever's approved tonight for the entire defeasance. So we're not approving a defeasance tonight, we're approving the maximum amount that we can add to the tax levy. And then, the defeasance typically comes around the end of February, and then is applied to the April first payment.
And can I also clarify that we are not approving a levy tonight, right? A vote is still to come, and it could change.
Yes, you get to vote on the levy in October.
Thank you.
So are we going to vote?
Yes.
You ready?
Please.
Okay. Dr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Wukowski?
No.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Graduation, Mrs. Bennen and Mr. Cromie, please.
Okay, so, Mr. Cromie and I reviewed four minutes from June, when Mr. Millsner and Ms. Miller talked about graduation and gave a report, as far as the last time in twenty nineteen, that it was at the complex and at American Family Field since then. So we did our own visits to the sites, learned a little more from the people that are at those sites, looked at additional costs and what those will be. So basically, what we're reporting out on tonight are what we know, and trying to give you an update to where we'd like to move forward, because the dates, if we do go with American Family Field, usually open up, it's not a solid date, but could open up anytime in the next month. So we just want to be able to, if that's the route we go, get on those dates and times as soon as possible. So what we've learned about the, we've looked at three different venue options, knowing that the board had shown some interest in, you know, if we can ideally do it in Franklin, that would be good. And then, considering whether, if it's an outside area and indoor and things like that, also looking at the financial and looking at what kind of feedback we've had. So what we know from this past year at American Family Field is we, overall, our approximate attendance was about three thousand. So that's a good number to keep in mind when we look at what our other venue options could potentially be. That's a combination of tickets given to families, you know, our graduates and our band being there, and then also the tickets that were sold. What Dr. Miller reported out on in June is that it was about an additional cost of two thousand five hundred forty-three dollars. I guess that's something about, that's pretty exact. And it cost at American Family Field over if they would have continued on at the Milwaukee Sports Complex. Upon visiting the Milwaukee Sports Complex and talking with their leadership, Milwaukee Parks and Rec has, you know, continues to try to find the money to keep their things up to date. So if you visit the building, you would visibly be able to see that there's some areas that need to be kept up to date. What they very quickly told, or told Cromie on the phone and myself when we were there, was that they don't have air conditioning. But that is the biggest complaint that they've heard when we've had graduation there. So we still like to continue on and see the tours. So in their space, which most of you, I think all of you are familiar with, it seats four thousand on the floor, kind of a little bit of risers on the side, so visibility's a concern. They don't have the technology to see graduates, as well as you're trying to look over all the heads in front of you. We've used half of that space in the past for seating and half of it to do lineup. So when you do seating that way, it's two thousand, that whole space seats four thousand. As you know from being there, there's not enough room to line up outside of that space, you'd have to use part of it. So to get the three thousand, remember I said that's the magic number, we'd have to use three quarters of that space and try to cut out one corner to do lineup. I think logistically, we could see where that would be difficult. Anything's doable, but difficult. I think the other piece with sports complex to share is that the cost has gone up considerably, and it would be going up nine thousand from what those numbers were that you looked at in the past, which puts it at a cost over American Family Field of about five thousand dollars.
Wow.
So that makes, you know, it's a difference, and the numbers are there, so at least we have a little more fact to move on. So that's a little bit about the Milwaukee Sports Complex. American Family Field, obviously, you know, the, I'll remind you, but I, I know you know, the expenses with that also are custodial. We do all the rental to set up the seats, so there's a lot of prep work that goes into it, which means we need the facility a little bit ahead of time, which, it's all the increased costs that I know Dr. Miller walked through at that time. American Family Field, what that has to offer is, we know, the visibility, there's not a seat you're going to find that you can't see. Obviously, weather, just like the sports complex, is not an issue. Temperatures, more chilled in the American Family Field than the sports complex, even by sports complex leadership telling us that. It's turnkey, we don't need to have any additional costs with rentals, with custodial, any of those pieces. And I think those are the big pieces that stand out. The third venue that we looked at and toured was Rock, the Lux Bay area, that whole venture area. So in touring that, when they designed the bays, they created, in that turf area, so if you've driven through there, where you can hit the golf balls, right? I'm not a golfer, so I apologize if I use the wrong terms. It seats four thousand on that flat field. They have an access road between there and Franklin Field, where you can bring a stage in. So you would have capability, weather permitting, to be on that turf field to see, probably similarly to Milwaukee Complex, you're going to see through the heads that are in front of you, there's no height there. Franklin Field would give you a little bit of height if you went there with the stadium area, but you'd have a lot of seating on the ground. Both hold about four thousand, so we're hitting the magic number of three thousand, really looking at visibility. In the bays, you could also, in the Lux, you could also rent the bays, so the three floors, which seat about eight apiece, there's fifty-six of them, so right, rough numbers, about four hundred additional seating. Could you use that to turn revenue and rent them out? Maybe we'd have to come up with a really good random selection process, so none of us lose sleep over that. Those are three quarters covered from weather, so you'd have about four hundred seats that are slightly covered from weather, but they're open on the baseline. So, that's outdoors. If we were to get weather, we could reserve the Mosh, they said that that has capability. So I should say about the bay, they have not had any events there yet. They said they'd have numbers to us yesterday, I just peeked at my email a minute ago to make sure, we still don't have numbers from them, so that's the downfall right now, I don't have numbers. They say they would be turnkey, they would do all the rental of chairs, all the setup, you know, we'd obviously get charged for that. So I just don't know that number, and I really wish I had it. The Mosh could be the backup, it's right next door to it, indoors, turf ground, again, flat area, holds about, I think they told us four thousand in there, too. Again, you're going to be looking through heads, the technology's not there, but it could be a backup if we decided we wanted to go that route, and then also reserve the Mosh. Obviously, an additional fee to have both spaces rented, if you wanted to say, we're doing it on this date, rain or shine, these are our options. Obviously, if you do an outdoor, you can try to run through the stress of moving that graduation, you know, up to whatever time beforehand, and switching weekends, which is another option if we'd go with one of the, well, if we'd go with outdoor venue like Lux Bay Area. So that's kind of the differences between the two. Like I said, we don't have the numbers from the Rock, despite all our efforts to try to have those this evening. And the feedback from American Family Field, I know was shared off the bat from the first time. In addition, the anecdotal feedback we've received has been positive. There was on a survey sent this year, what I understood as a survey, it was originally sent just to get the feedback from a first-time fact. So that's kind of the report out, talking with high school administration, our team, the recommendation, and what we want to continue to go forward with is American Family Field because of the turnkey access and not having to take in the weather, the fact that students have and staff have talked about how the, and families, that just the visibility, the ability to, anybody can go, just a lot of those pieces that have been talked about in the past and a little bit resurfaced this evening. So this is really an information-only report, you know, obviously, we want your blessing to be able to move forward with American Family Field for those reasons, and that we tried to explore, if we want to come back and talk more about Rock Venture, we could, or I can just email those numbers out when we have them, if it's more of a numbers piece.
To me, it's a numbers piece, right? If we can rent both the outdoor space and the Mosh for a comparable number, I would be open to attempting that for graduation.
What, but you talk about the visibility, I guess I'm, I've been in that area, I haven't been in, well, I'm also not a golfer, so, I haven't been in there to actually golf. Where, I guess I don't understand how that would work there. Where would the students be, and where would the, the families be, and how would you see that? Is there any, like, screen or anything, like, you would have, or if we were inside at the Mosh and everyone is sitting on the same level? How do you?
It'd be same level if we use the Lux Bay or the Mosh. You could probably try to rent screens and bring them in, I think you'd have better visibility of that in the Mosh, just, if you're outside, it's probably a bright, good-weather day. So, you know, we could see what we could see, kind of thing, if we brought in screens. But I think we just have to consider sunlight with that. If you do Franklin Field, we understand that it holds four thousand also, then you'd have the screen in there, and I'm assuming we'd have to double-check with Zach that they would project on that screen, I don't know why they wouldn't.
Why would they push? I wouldn't have even thought about the Lux Bay, like, I got the sense that.
We were surprised that they designed it for that.
Oh, it was designed for?
Well, designed for the ability to do that.
Yeah, it's, it's designed to have that ability. So they should, just showed us all three areas, so that, like, they, they are in control of renting all three properties, so, kind of all three. The, like, I'm really interested to see the costs of Franklin Field, because they have to deck the field, so I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. So, different than the turf used for golf is, like, it's all sand-based, so you can just put chairs on it. The turf for, the field is very similar to, like, our high school field, where you're not just going to go put chairs on it and hope they don't poke holes in it, right? It's not as, it's not as like, it, it's less durable from the, like, the old kind of turf, if you remember, old, like, outdoor carpeting? Like, that's the turf inside of golf, like, you can do anything on it, and you're probably fine.
Looking at the bays first.
Okay.
So they showed, just showed us all three potential properties to it. To kind of go to your question, Ms. Sapursky, like, think of, think of sitting at the far end of the football field and watching graduation in the end zone.
Yeah, that's.
That's what the last person's going to see sitting on the field in the Mosh, because the Mosh is a one-hundred-yard football field inside.
Yeah.
So.
That's based on Bennen, and that's why I don't understand how that would work.
Sitting in the back, it's like trying to watch the touchdown catch that was happened Friday night, if you were at the game, the one-handed catch, but you're a hundred yards over there.
So it wouldn't be arranged sort of sideways, it would be longitudinal.
Lex is very rectangular, like, it is.
But then the Mosh, too.
And the Mosh is very rectangular, yeah.
They might be able to set it upside, I mean, we didn't go into that specific with them, we were waiting to get.
They have very small portable bleachers, I'm sure they could rent some, so you could have some kind of bowl seating, so to speak, but portable bleachers are only four or five rows high.
Okay.
In any case. Like, if you were sitting in Franklin Field, you probably have a better view, because not only is that raised seating, it's already four or five feet off the field to begin with. So, people sitting there would be fine, but students, I think, are on the field. I think that's how they set up graduation at.
I, I would think they would have to, because there's just not enough seating generally, but I, I, I mean, it, it seems like, after being at, at American Family Field, it seems like being on the, having that sort of seating arrangement with how, with the amount of people that we have, it would have to be. after being at, at American Family Field, it seems like being on the, having that sort of seating arrangement with how, with the amount of people that we have, it would have to be Franklin Field with the backup being Mosh. I mean, I, maybe I just can't get it in my mind with the, with the Lux Golf, but, you know, the backup, I mean, I would guess Mosh looks, Mosh as a backup for rain looks very similar to, looks very similar to the Sports Complex, except it's brand new.
Yeah. The lighting is significantly better, at least it has some air conditioning.
I mean, it's a, it's a.
It does have air conditioning, right?
Yes, yes, it's a, I mean, the setup is similar.
Well, and that would be funny.
So, goal wise, if the goal is the best experience for our students and families and, you know, the district in terms of celebrating graduation, what does, I mean, unless the numbers come back and it's, you know, it's only a thousand dollars to rent all that at the Rock, clearly, that makes the decision pretty easy. But if, if the numbers come back even close to the same as American Family Field, what is the benefit to having it here, other than just it's in Franklin?
That's it.
That's the benefit.
Just, just the physical location.
Well, I would just say it's just the physical location. It's the community, I mean, people can stay in the community and do their celebrations, you're not running across town.
You've mentioned that before, Linda, I can tell you, at my graduation, we came back to Franklin and we supported a Franklin business. So, I don't think that just by going to Miller Park, people are not gonna be supporting Franklin businesses, so. And what, at Miller Park, American Family Field, sorry. If, if the experience there is significantly better, is, at least to me, it sounds like it would be in terms of visibility, access, parking, you know, handicapped accessibility, like, all those kinds of things. It seems like that is, and we haven't had.
I, I will tell you, parking at the Mosh is gonna be tight.
Yeah.
So, if we have 3,000 people there, like, it's gonna be tight. So, rarely do they have 3,000 people at a Franklin Field game, but now you've added, so let's say we just have it at Franklin Field. That means the Lux is still open, it's summertime, early summer, that's also gonna be like all packed and the restaurants will be opening up, so they'll be in full swing by six months. So, that's gonna just add to that entire mix. So, parking is a consideration there. I, I think, I always think of things like, there's this X, right? There's great value and there's what do we really need, and we're trying to blend those two. You try to find what's closest to crossing, what's great value and meets our needs. So, I, American Family Field certainly meets the needs. It has everything that you need, parking, it's turnkey. Like, I think of the Milwaukee County Sports Complex, it's not turnkey, right? So, not only is it gonna cost us a little bit more, but we're also losing a ton of man hours when we take our custodians over there to do work instead of doing something else in the district, right? So, it's not only the cost, it's lost whatever it is that they were gonna do, because that's another part of the consideration. The Mosh would be turnkey as well, but isn't gonna provide us the value, is it gonna give us all of those things? I don't know what the handicap parking looks like if we have all of those things, I don't know if the parking lot is necessarily big enough. The venue itself is pretty cool, I love, the Lux was awesome. Like, walking in would be, I was like, wow, this would be a great place to have it if you could guarantee it's not gonna rain. Because the bay thing is a pretty cool idea.
Except for the sightlines, right?
I was just gonna say, if you are, if it's your kid who's graduating.
That, that part is gonna be hard, but.
And you can't see your kid graduate, I think that is something you're gonna hear.
No, I'll give you the flat surface, but just the venue itself, I was like, oh, this is pretty cool, I could see that this.
Well, and there's a lot of pride in Franklin, rightfully so, about the whole Rock. I mean, it's a great facility, I, again, I'm not a golfer, I haven't been there yet, but.
It's our directional town square.
Yeah, I mean, that whole complex is a point of pride for Franklin, as it should be. I just don't know if it's the right place for graduation. I think it doesn't help until we have those numbers to really have a conversation though.
I can tell you, I've had five children graduate at the Sports Complex. And I was happy as a clam that day, but boy, when I sat at American Family Field last year, you couldn't wipe the silly grin off my face. I mean, seriously, it was amazing to me, it was amazing for me as an adult to be on that field. And it was amazing that, to see all those kids on that big screen and to, to look back up into the stands and see those families sitting there in comfortable chairs and smiling and holding signs and grandmas and grandpas. And there were little kids who had their own chair and nobody had to chase them on a bleacher. I mean, I think every penny would be well spent at American Family Field, really. And that sitting level, that really stinks. I mean, it really does, even if you're in a wonderful venue like the Mosh or wherever, and when you're sitting level like that, you don't see anything. You're hoping that's your kid walking across the stage and you're hoping you get that picture. But, man, I honestly, that, when I think about American Family Field and graduation, I, it gives me chills and I don't have any more little, you know, people to have graduate there anymore.
Your grandchildren.
Maybe a little while.
Well, Debbie, I have stories too.
I know.
My four kids also graduated there.
Yeah.
And you could say, even though it's undercover, it was canceled one year because of, it got flooded out. So, weather does happen, you do make adjustments. But when I sit in American Family Field though, I think, I remember in the Sports Complex, so, the sea of people and they're walking through the middle. American Family Field, they're sneaking down the side. There's something different about watching them, that procession, down the middle. It's a different feeling.
All right, so we should add center aisle to our positives for the Sports Complex?
It's a part, it's the whole experience.
I, I thought, I thought the sneaking was kind of nice too, because you saw all of these kids and they kept coming and they kept coming and I just, I was completely bedazzled.
And I thought it was, and I think it's kind of rushed. Do you recall on the stage when we're trying to get these kids as fast as we can and they kind of bunched up?
Well, that could be, that could be how fast the.
I don't think that ever happened.
Their names.
Yeah, I think those are weird. Does anyone else wanna keep the Sports Complex on the table? I would be happy to never talk about the Sports Complex again.
I think that it's clear that that is not an option.
I don't, it doesn't sound like the Sports Complex. I don't think the Sports Complex wants us.
Especially with many, right, it's costing us more money.
I am just sharing the experiences, you know, I didn't say we should go back there, but I.
I think if we, if, if we can get a really good deal on Franklin Field and then have a backup plan inside the Mosh, I would consider it, but it would have to be a really good deal to.
I think we, I think we need to see the numbers, but I think we, I, I, it sounds like we should not do anything differently and move forward with, move forward with, with American Family Field.
I think we should see the numbers.
Of course, we should see.
I'll show those when we get them. I'm hoping it's very soon, like I said, it was gonna be yesterday.
I mean, didn't Greendale go there?
Greenfield.
Greenfield.
Okay, so it's not like we're the first ones to show up there.
No, we wouldn't be the first ones.
No.
But if they hold off on giving you those numbers too long.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't wanna lose out on American Family Field.
Exactly. We don't wanna lose out on American Family Field and then.
Yeah.
All right.
And it also shows how responsive they are.
Right, if they, I mean, we have a school board meeting tonight, they knew that.
We're clear about it. Okay, on the floor with that.
Great, thank you. All right, and school board liaison reports, board liaison reports, does anybody have board liaison report? Dr. Beer, please.
I met with Mrs. Jewel at Ben Franklin, she's the new principal there, we had a good first meeting, she walked me through the school. They are, they now have three kindergarten sections, so Ben Franklin is starting, yeah, so Ben Franklin is starting to get bigger too. And she helped me to see that, you recall the presentation we had last year that showed that the only elementary school with significant room for growth is Ben Franklin? Those rooms aren't all sitting empty, they are occupied by district system specialists and, and I can't remember all the different programs that are housed there right now. So, it's less of a sort of vacant space just awaiting, it will cause ripple effects if and when we have to move kids into there, just so everyone knows that. She went over their building goals for the year, they, they are great and similar to last year and they're gonna have a focus on improving family engagement at Ben Franklin. So, that's an exciting development. I met with Mr. Blessington, we prepared that, went over the excellent summer school report that you all saw. He gave me some updates on everything he's been learning and we had some conversations about the value of the board hearing about significant curricular change well in advance of needing to vote on it and what that might look like for when that comes in the calendar year, so we'll have further discussions on that. And he also gave me some updates on the fact that system specialists are gonna start being more instructional coach type models, I don't know if they'll change their name, with more ties directly to schools versus a centralized approach, which is an exciting change that I think will benefit our, our schools immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. I did it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Linda.
I did, there was an SWSA meeting yesterday and it was virtual. There's new members, I thought it was interesting, we all kind of went around and I could see some business managers have changed places in different districts, so it was good to see, interesting to see how that's switched around. And yes, the budget's been released and, but yet, there's uncertainty in election, because election's coming, although it's probably gonna be very close. And also went over how to tell the story, but I think the way our meetings are set up, that we would talk about SWSA following meeting, I would work with the Annalee there to kind of report on that meeting after. But that's the way it's done in the past.
Was there a new, they've successfully hired another new executive director or not?
She is, she is interim.
Yeah, Faith Vanderhorst is the interim, she was the board member in Menominee Falls and holding the position till they hire.
So, but, yes, so maybe we can talk a little bit more on that next, next meeting.
Yeah, I think we should.
I also met with Bridget Mulberry at Southwood Glen, I met with her before the school year started, so I, she didn't have goals yet for the, for the year, but it sounds like they have a very stable staff. I know there's a lot of new staff around the district, but her school only has really one from the outside and they're hiring, and one was promoted as an intern or a student teacher last year. And they're also working on their teams and then also universal design for learning, those, kind of making those things available to all students is kind of what we talked about, so. That's it.
Well, I met with Mrs. Cody, obviously, about our exciting seclusion and restraint report, so that was exciting, you already heard about that. But obviously, always continued good conversations about lots of things in the district, talked a little bit more about gifted programming as well and what we're doing with that. And then Franklin Education Foundation, Ms. Bennon already talked about the consignment sale, come get your good deals this Saturday. But also, there is, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Yang, the date for the fashion show?
November 12th.
Thank you, November 12th is the next big event after that with our fashion show, which will be coming up. So, that's another exciting district event.
Thank you.
I was scheduled to meet with the Frank, has Mr. Biolo, but he had a funeral to attend, so that was canceled the last moment, but I'm planning to meet him soon, upcoming week or so.
Thank you, I've met with Janie Bombian at Robinwood. Wasn't as much a meeting as it was on the day of the back to school day, so it was a great night, we stood outside, the community really seems to embrace her. She's, lives in Franklin and a lot of people know her and are quite excited about that she is here. And so, so that school is, there's a lot of energy that night. I don't know if this counts as liaison report, probably more like an engagement report, but as Annalee said, I will be, I accepted a job as a bus driver today. So, I will be going through my seat, getting my CDL license and working for first student as a bus driver.
I think we need to take that moment away from you.
Trying to get people.
Sorry.
I'm gonna get you a special.
I was just gonna say, we get to get like on the bus driver t-shirt.
Uh huh, yep.
One of those reflective vests.
Be seat covers that the taxi driver.
All right, perhaps we should move on to school and community engagement.
But Mike, thank you so much for coming. You know, as a, as a president of the school board, you stepping up, you know, shows our passion and dedication to the district and to the students, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thanks.
Yes.
Does anybody else have any community engagement reports? I know there's been a lot of things happening at school. I was at the football game last Friday night, I'm not sure how much I engaged with the community, there's a couple of people, I was talking with Annalee and Andy for, for a large part of the game, but a lot of other people around us watching the game. And I saw that the game as well. Anybody else? School and community engagement reports? No, all right?
No, I was.
Please, sorry.
I was also at the football game, I missed the cool kids club, so I was cheering for football and then helping on the field with the band. I had gong duty on Friday night. But also, different sports, I haven't, I was supposed to get to the soccer game and I ended up not being able to, but swim meets, swim and dive meets have started happening. But also, the high school had open house last week and that was, and the middle school has open house tomorrow, so if anybody's interested in what middle school life is like, you can go there tomorrow. But I always love the high school open house, because they have you walk a student's schedule. And I can tell you, I was wearing these shoes, they were not meant for an all, whole day of school. But really, what I, what really struck me was that all the teachers that I met, and I was watching my own kids' schedules, so I, you know, I didn't meet everybody. The teachers universally were so excited about what they're teaching and wanting to tell parents about, oh, you know, I mean, like, psychology, anatomy, government, even, you know, pre calc, like, this is why my class is so exciting, this is why this subject is so exciting, this is why I can't wait to teach your students here. And it just, nobody was like depressed about being there, they were all like, I love what I teach and I'm so happy to be here. And it was just encouraging for me to see that, that, you know, our teachers really do, they love what they do and they're happy to be here and I think our students are really benefiting from that, so.
I thought that was a fun night.
And I second that, because as a parent, I was there too. And I think the staff seems to be excited, you know, and eager to answer your questions, you know, and they're very welcoming to the parents as such, so.
How did your feet do with all the walking? They were okay?
They were okay.
All right, anybody else? All right, future agenda items, Countrydale Elementary School presentation, athletics and activities report, Wisconsin School Board Recognition Week, Community Education and Recreation Department report and the at-risk report are coming up. Please write down SWSA as well, we'll, we'll talk about how that's gonna be at the last meeting of the month going forward. And I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries, the meeting is adjourned at 7:28, thank you, everyone.